Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Let me call to order the Merrimack Planning Board meeting for August 4th, 2015. Let me begin by reminding everyone to make sure your microphone's turned on and to introduce yourself for the record. I'm going to use the chairman's prerogative to reorder the agenda briefly to take care of items four and five, which are both items where the applicants have requested some continuances, although I believe there's some comments that someone may want to make with respect to item number four. So with that, let's jump to item four on the agenda. I'm sorry, let me appoint Jeff to sit in as a voting member tonight. Item four, Matty Schweri is the applicant and owner, review for acceptance in consideration of final approval for a waiver of full site plan review for a restaurant located at 480 DW Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial Elderly and Town Center Overlay in Aquifer Conservation District, Tax Map 5D3 Lot 46. The agenda item has been continued from the June 2nd and July 7th, 2015 Planning Board meetings. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we...
In your packet you'll have a brief letter from Matty Schweri, the applicant requesting a continuance to the August 18th agenda, asking for additional time to secure the off-site parking provisions and addressing the board's concerns. I do understand that there are a couple of folks that may want to speak as to the record and the minutes from the July 7th meeting, so the board may want to listen to that before you make a motion on this.
Thank you, Tim. Desiree, I know that you were a little bit involved with the applicant in getting his materials together. Is August 18th a reasonable deadline?
Do you have his application, Tim?
I don't have any of his stuff with me tonight.
Has he submitted one?
He has not submitted anything new. He's been into the office and shown us some things, and we've gone over some of the things he needs to do to address the board's concerns, but I have not seen anything since then.
All righty, no. If he hasn't submitted, we won't make... The deadline was the 18th of July, right, according to the meeting minutes?
The deadline to submit for August 18th would be...
For a project that's already been in the planning board process, we typically allow for a little bit of time, so he could probably get something in by the end of this week or early next week. That would be the very latest for us to get a review done.
So if he does that, he could be on the August 18th agenda?
Yep. Or you could opt for September if you don't think that's enough time.
Okay.
He's asked for what he's asked for. I haven't spoken to him about it, so I'm not really...
Okay.
I helped him draft the request for that, so I'm not sure. I'm really not. It may be another request.
Okay.
At that time. I think that's the best that I can do, but I would say, yes, there's still time to get it done this week. Most of the stuff, I figure, was good, so we'll talk. I think we're fine, though.
Take it at face value. Okay. You mentioned that there were some members of the public or butters who wished to weigh in. Please come forward and introduce yourself for the record. Do we have our sign-in clipboard?
It's over.
All the way over on that table.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Board. My name is Larry Vajetzi.
Before you... Larry, I don't think your microphone's turned on. Touch the...
Push.
There you go.
Says push real big. My name is Larry Vajetzi. I'm the president of the John O'Leary Community Center. This is Steve Dembo. He's the center coordinator. I was given a set of your minutes, and I reviewed them over last week, and I noticed some inconsistencies in them I just want to have corrected for the record.
Okay.
First of all, let me just state, the John O'Leary Community Center has no problem at all with a restaurant opening in town. Actually, personally, I think it's a great idea, and I look forward to having supper there. But I noticed that in the minutes that the gentleman, I apologize for not remembering his name, Marty, said that he talked to Mr. Joseph from the John O'Leary Community Center, we do not have a Mr. Joseph at the John O'Leary Community Center on our board. So I know he did talk to Steve Dembo about the parking there. Now, the John O'Leary Community Center is owned by the township. We manage the property. We manage the building. We manage the maintenance of the property, so we can't make a decision for the township whether he could park there or not. So the first issue was I just wanted the name Mr. Joseph cleared up. He did not talk to anybody on our board named Mr. Joseph. And second, that if he needs to talk about parking at the center, he would need to talk to somebody from Merrimack Township, not us. Now, I know Steve did talk to him, and I'm going to just turn over the mic if it's okay to Steve, let you know how the conversation went, please.
Sure.
Yes, good evening. During one of our infamous winter storms this year, one of them, I recall, was some lack of response from the Public Works Department, and unfortunately, that left our lot unplowed for a period of time. And I was out there shoveling the walkway, which is part of my unofficial duties as a coordinator over there, and all of a sudden, a guy pulls up in a pickup truck with a plow on it, and he starts to plow the front of the building. And he gets out, and I said, "Well, who are you?" And he says, "Well, I'm Marty. I live over there." And I said, "Well, I've never met you." So he told me that he lives over there, and he's just given me a little bit of a hand. And I said, "Well, that's wonderful." And then we got to talking, and he told me of his plans to open a Lebanese restaurant and that location. And one thing led to another, and it came about that he was concerned about the necessity to provide ample parking space, which, of course, would be required from any establishment. And he asked me, if it came down to it, if he needed, let's say, four additional parking spaces per request of the planning or zoning board, whether or not he could use the facility at our center. And I told him that I had no authority to grant that access. It's town property, and our number-one priority is to make sure that the parking lot is available for use by the occupants of the center. Now, when the center is not being used, we certainly don't have anybody policing our perimeter limited parking spaces that we do have. Per agreement with the church next door, the town and the church have this agreement where the center occupants have use of that parking lot because it belongs to the church, and the town maintains the winter snow removal on behalf, for the benefit of the church. So we have generally Monday through Saturday access to use that parking lot. We are excluded from using it on Sunday per request of the church. So we have limited parking space on our property as it is, and I felt that it was beyond my purview to grant him permission to use a piece of town property for parking. But having said that, if nobody is using the center, people park wherever. We have a very large group that meets on Sunday mornings called AA, and there are about 150 people that meet there every Sunday morning, and they park on his property sometimes because there's no delineation, there's no markings, no lines, and people are not sure where to park. So parking, you know, can be an issue. Of course, the hours of his operation would vary. They would be in the evening typically. Bottom line is, I could not grant him authority to park there. And I suggested that he contact the church because they have much more parking available than we do, and perhaps he could work something out with them. But I couldn't speak for the town or for the John O'Leary Center.
Okay. Thanks for sharing, clarifying that.
And again, we just want to make sure it's clear for the record and that you should talk to the township.
I appreciate making it clear, and I think in terms of any other discussion or questions, we'd wait till a time when Mr. Schweri was here so that the discussion's full. But I know that you came out just for this, and I wanted to, you know, give you the opportunity to be on the record for that.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both for that information. With that, what's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's request for a continuance to August 18th?
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. It's related to something from England. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the applicant's request to continue this matter till the 18th of August at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notice to any butters.
Is there a second for that motion? Second by Desire, all in favor, say aye.
Before you vote, I would...
I'm going abstaining.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Me.
So that is 4-0-1 to grant the continuance to August 18th. That brings us to item five on our agenda, which is Robert Lavoy is the applicant, and Greg R. Kennedy as the owner, review for acceptance in consideration of final approval of an application for a two-lot minor subdivision, the parcel's located at 8 Fuller Mill Road in R1 Residential District, Tax Map 4B Lot 153. This agenda item has been continued from the July, June 16th and July 7th Planning Board meetings. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we take up the applicant's request?
In your packet you'll find an email from Dan Higgins at the Meridian Land Services requesting continuance to the meeting on September 1st. Just by means of background, the petition, this applicant was in front of the zoning board, or scheduled in front of the zoning board last week for an appeal of administrative decision regarding the interpretation of staff as to the requirements for the lot size being in the R1 district by map. I submitted, which hopefully you all got a copy of. I believe we sent a copy to the Planning Board. Relatively detailed memo with a lot of backup and information regarding the process that went into that vote back in the year 2000. The applicant's attorney has then asked the zoning board and was granted a continuance to August 26th with the potential of withdrawing that appeal and changing the application to a variance. So that is still unresolved, and for those reasons, they're looking for September 1st.
Okay. And there's nobody here from the applicant to discuss that. Is there, what's the will of the board with respect to the request for continuance?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the request of the applicant to continue this matter till the 1st of September of this year at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notice to any butters.
Is there a second? Second by Counselor Mahon. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to grant that continuance. And that, with that, let's get back to the original order of our agenda, which is item two, the joint meeting of the Planning Board and Conservation Commission. Will the members of the Conservation Commission come forward to these tables, join us in a joint meeting? And once you get settled in, I'll ask you first to...
Yeah, keep off the center table if...
Yeah, let Pete have the center table for the presentation itself. Is there enough room for everybody if we do it that way? I've got two if you had an...
If you've got two, I'm sure the lucky lot.
And with that...
Yeah, I forgot I did a list of...
No, you don't need to sign in, but I will ask everyone to introduce yourself for the record so that Zina can record it for the minutes and welcome everyone. I always love the opportunity to have joint meetings with folks and get some communication going between the Planning Board and some of the other boards in town. Where do you want to start with introductions? Mr. Chairman?
Okay. So I'll start with myself. My name is Tim Tenhav. I'm the chair of the Merrimack Conservation Commission and have been for a couple of years now.
Thank you, Tim. Who else?
Matt Karen, Vice Chair of Conservation Commission. I also have been for a couple of years now.
I'm Gage Perry. I'm just the Conservation Commissioner, not the chair. I have been for a few years. That's it.
Hi, I'm Mike Boivier, Commissioner.
Jody Valancourt, I'm Town Council Representative to the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you for coming.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we do have another, we have an alternate. Her name is Kristy Bradshaw, is not here, and we have another commissioner who is not able to attend, and her name is Cindy Glenn.
Kristy and Cindy.
Yep.
Thank you all for coming, and I appreciate this, and I think that we've got a couple of things that we wanted to do on our agenda. One is the presentation that Alastair's trying to get going for us on some of the issues related to soil types in town. And then the second item on our agenda is a little bit more open for discussion, and I wanted to touch on some of the things that are very frequently in your recommendations to us based on the projects that you've seen. So with that, Alastair...
No, no, no. It's Pete.
Well, I know, but you're the one, you're the one doing the magic here.
I'm only the operator.
All right.
Pete is the genius you know us all about. I've just simply taken his words of wisdom and tried to put them on a screen so that they don't understand.
Excellent. Pete, you want to come forward?
Let me grab it. Awesome. Stay with me, ready, Pete. Okay? This is my foot, this slide out, he hasn't seen this one. I stung this even one just because I had to have a bit of a light relief, just to make everybody have a bit of a...
I don't think either one of your microphones are on.
Sorry. It's there just as a sort of light relief because a friend of mine actually said, "Surely dirt is dirt," and I said, "No, I would have thought that a year ago, but now I know Pete, and he's trained me." The rest of it is now Pete's. Okay.
I think for the benefit of the Conservation Commission, Pete has for some time been discussing with the board and providing some information about soil science with the aim towards giving us a better understanding of how it would shape our decisions on applications and for us, as well as with other boards, including you guys and perhaps the zoning board at some point. And with that, I don't know a whole lot more else I could offer other than to say, this fellow here's named Pete.
I first got involved in 1970 with planning issues in a town in Merrimack. Town had some very, very difficult times. We went from a very small town to a very rapid, rapidly growing town, overwhelming our entire education system, contaminating lands, contaminating other water courses flowing into communities. This finally led to a very comprehensive study that involved quite a bit of people and agencies. The one was, most of these documents are on file with the town, but the one specifically Innovative Land Uses Controls, the Handbook of Sustainable Development of 2008, flood hazard conservation districts, Growth Management, Volume Two, which is, which my wife Nancy, who was state representative for three terms at the time, and it finally evolved with a comprehensive study of soils and their effects on development, which is part of the Soil Survey of Hillsborough County, New Hampshire, Eastern Park. The original soil analysis was performed by the Soil Conservation Service during 1970-79, performed in conjunction with the Department of Agriculture, the Soil Survey of Hillsborough County, New Hampshire that I mentioned. Typically, the survey is done by test borings and observation of cuts, of road cuts and land uses. Now, this dates back to when the glacier receded 12,000 years ago. It deposited a structure of soils throughout the state of New Hampshire and the northern part of the United States. These soils are still out there now. They've been modified by man, and this study was conducted, that they conducted, clearly identified the, what the soils were and established standards for development and standards for land uses or misuses, if you will. So these profiles reflect the great glacial deposits, and the method that they developed, SCS developed, relied on topographical maps at the time in the 70s. The elevations and contours. In the mapping process, they followed the contour intervals in, often foliage was used to determine where wetlands were and other types of land, other types of soils by which, what grows, by observation of what grows there, along with numerous, numerous test borings that took place. The interesting part about this, and being a former surveyor for three years, is that this soil survey is in what I consider to be innovative technology that only adds to the topographic features that are mapped, and surveyors who come in and survey, they survey their sites and then determine through test pits and borings what's out there. Now, different soils have different drainage characteristics, water table levels and structural characteristics. Water table levels, you don't necessarily have to observe the water table. It's like the ring of a bathtub. It'll be, the seasonal high water table would show up at any time you dig a hole. If you dig it in the spring, you're going to find water in the hole, but the seasonal high water table will have a modeling line in there. And the best that they could do at the time, because we don't, at that time, we didn't have things like GPSs and things like that. You had to rely on topographic maps that in themselves were not necessarily accurate. And so the soil's delineation that you can find can have a move, plus or minus 50 feet. That's, and so subsequently, there is a built-in error. And that's where the, that's where the town had to kind of come in and establish standards for land uses. We determined where the wetland boundaries were, and they all, these were also defined by the United States Army Corps of Engineers. The Soil Conservation Service data then developed the boundaries based on foliage, based on topography, and based on the location which they believed they were located at and performed their test holes. Soil scientists then came into the picture. They did not exist in those years, and, but they became, it became an occupation that was very welcome in that we were able to determine the accuracy of the original surveys. Merrimack ordinances were developed using the data from both SCS and the Army Corps of Engineers. Merrimack's ordinance based on Soil Conservation Service and Army Corps of Engineers data. Oops, yep. Thank you. You have to bear with me, this parking's really getting into me, so...
You're doing great.
So, so it combined the two in developing the mapping, and it also came, resulted in developing the limitations on developments based on the soil types. Those limitations could be severe, slight, moderate, severe. It's classified in that handbook for various land uses, severe for roads, cavins, washouts, severe for erosion in on-site disposal systems, which if not properly constructed or maintained, results in environmental damage. And that really had taken place for a good many years in Merrimack, not only in Merrimack, in the town, city of Nashville where I was born. And the end result was contamination of every brook stream and what have you, and showing up all over the place. We had subdivisions that were contaminating the Nashville water supply system. The town had to get into a situation where it had to set up some chlorine contact stations from the brooks that were draining into that watershed. So, but in general, that's a little bit of history. I don't want to get into too much of that detail, but other than to say that it was very dramatic and extremely costly on behalf of the town. There's an additional effect where there's no town water and sewer are available, and that resulted in our, in our R1 district. New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services regulates the site, the on-site waste disposal systems, their design, where they're going to be, the soil, based on the soil types. And the standards are based on the various soil characteristics that are found in the borings or the mapping. The town is responsible for observing what takes place in a test pit, but a test pit is merely a place where you're going to dig a hole and see where the seasonal high water table is and determine whether you can put an on-site disposal system in the area, how well it's going to work, and what have you. The state has a disclaimer that what's, they receive the information for the disposal systems, they have no further responsibility, primarily because the town is responsible for the observation of test pits and so forth. And the town, through the Building Department, is responsible for guiding the developer and not just the Building Department, but the Planning Board. The standards are largely endorsed by the New Hampshire Home Builders Association, as they are. What they tend to do is group soils that are severe and moderate into, or even slight, into a lesser category. And that's where the problem comes along because the soil grouping is contrary to the definitions of slight, moderate, severe that you will find for land uses in the soil, from the Soil Conservation Service studies that have taken place. So subsequently, they, subsequently, they are a very powerful lobby, and that's not surprising. If I was involved in making regulations that would affect my income or something like that, I'd probably be very unhappy if they made significant changes. But it's always been extremely difficult to break into that system of grouping that the state has. Now, when it comes down to Merrimack itself, based, because our whole ordinance is based on the, is based solely on the Hillsborough County, New Hampshire, Eastern Park publication, you'll find every, just type of a description of soil in there that, and gives you warnings about what you could expect. We had to develop a system in the zoning ordinance that would allow the Planning Board to require site-specific soil investigations where there was suspicious or contrary to what was already mapped, and contrary to the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. Now, developers, where they could get town water and sewer, largely ignored what the sewers were. So you'd have road washouts, floods in people's yards, flooded septic systems, a whole host of things all over town, and cluster developments in flood plants all over town flooding homes that flood. that flood. It's a, it's a hundred-year flood, but not, a hundred-year flood is about 1% of opportunity that you could have a flood in any given year. So that's roughly 3.65 days a year. 200 would be half that amount. So we require in cluster developments by standards, both town water and sewer services. Now, we've had situations where developers have gone to the ZBA seeking variances. They claimed hardship on an effort to get around these regulations. The result is there's potential unsu, potentially unsuitable developments. The town has no control. We, we control through the, through our site reviews and peers, peer reviews, how things are going to develop. But the town has no control in long-term actions of a homeowner who abuse, either abuses the system, the application of fertilizers, the salt disposal systems, and soil contamination and surface water contamination that has taken place. And so the, these, the solution, as I see it, is the planning board is authorized by the ordinance, with authorized to have a peer review of the, of the subdivision of the plan, of the plan. And has the technology and the resources available, based on the ordinance as, as they're called out, to override soil definitions. ZBA could table the variance requests of this type to the planning board, but they, typically the ordinance is written in a manner that you go to the planning board first. And if you, and the planning board makes a determination based on the evidence that they have before, and if they find that the, the evidence clearly supports that there's a problem in that particular subdivision, the developer still has a right to appeal to the ZBA. And at least the ZBA has facts based on the final decision. So that, that's a very general thing that, that the structure of the ordinance presents. Now, that, that's, that's an extreme burden, I would say, probably on planning board members.
Okay.
Because they have to, they have to really know and understand the ordinances, what they mean, and why SCS is overrides the state, right virtue of what the town adopted. And the stand, those standards are all called out in our, and every soil type is called out, and right in our ordinances. The, the whole idea there is to bring people together before the problem starts and identify the problem before it becomes a problem. And the, the, as I said, it's innovative technology. It's, it's, it's not an antique thing. It's really, it's a question of technology that we have to deal with in order to address the standards that our zoning ordinances require. Now, there's a desire out there to open up 3,000 acres or more to development, and we've seen moves in that, in that direction that have, that are highly risky to the town because in one particular area, the soils with some minor exceptions were all rated as severe, including those that were identified in the soil survey by the, by the soil scientist. And it required quite, quite a bit of development that allowed them to put some, 19 lots in there, I'm not sure, the old Tameesian plan. And, but in any event, this is, that particular plan is, has its own set of risks. The only light that I can see I'd like to bring out to, and it's very important, is the stormwater management standards which were adopted by the town council on July 21st, 2011. That means that everybody out there has to follow those best management practices to protect the quality of water in town in Meramec. But enforcing and watching, if you're looking at something after the fact, and subsequently the, this is, this work is not done, then, then you can expect to have some problems in the future. So it's a burden on the planning board, it's a burden on the planning department to learn and understand why these ordinances are there. They were just not pulled out from the air. But they, they were pulled out as a result of some very comprehensive studies, help from the state of New Hampshire, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, water supply and pollution control commission, and quite, and a number of, a number of other state and federal agencies that were involved, and as usual. And so, and a number of attorneys who were participating in the, in developing in these ordinances and the standards that are in there. So it, I just want to point out that you have a very extensive burden to adopt them. The pressure is there to break into and open up new lands for development. There are consequences depending on what you're doing. There are consequences on the environment, there are consequences in the education systems, there are consequences on taxes, there's a whole host of other things. In the meantime, I strongly recommend that the planning board and the planning, the planning department work very closely with the Public Works Department that has developed an updated sewer master plan. That is a very, a key that the town has to finance to correct the problems that are currently out there. And I'll say, state one, one particular problem, at least in my area, the Musa Brook is complete, completely contaminated. Fish and game will not stock it anymore. I used the brook as a, as a supplement for dry weather, and it corrodes, corrodes your metal, corrodes your pumps. The bacteria level is so high in there that there's slime in, in the brook, and it gets, creates problems with trying, attempting to grow things. And we're not the, I'm not the only one. There's the Amherst Country Co., uses that too, and there are a number of other people in the town. To me, it's not dependent, but I'm just saying that it's going to be an extremely costly proposition, and by the time you get sewer out in that area, and that won't be in my lifetime, because that's not in the budget. It will be at some point in time, but the EPA is out there pushing to get these water, water resources cleaned up. And Nashville is still running way behind the times to try to correct their problems. So it's a very general thing, but the most important thing to, I'm trying to, message I'm trying to give you is that know why the ordinance is there, and know how to use them, and work with the, with the technology and the resources and the people who, soil scientists or wetland scientists who have the expertise, and make sure those plans are drawn up in a manner to protect the long-term interests of the town. And I think I just kind of rattled on a little bit here, but it's just that.
Thank you for the presentation. Let me see how well I followed along and, and what I learned from what you told me, as well as some of the things from before. And I'll summarize, so I'm going to skip over some of the details, but what you're saying is that there's any number of types of soil in New Hampshire. Some of them are going to drain better than others, some of them are more suitable for building than others. If you build on the ones that aren't suitable for drainage, your septic systems won't work, your drainage won't work, your fertilizer's going to run off, you're going to have environmental impacts. You're going to have, from firsthand knowledge from the 70s and 80s, the town has some experience with the costs of correcting those sorts of misplaced developments. And it would be a good idea for all of us to try to avoid going down that path again, where you've got some environmental impacts because of developments that are placed in the wrong place. And so our zoning ordinances are developed with the R1 and other residential districts based on the soil types, from the several methodologies there are to determine soil types, but all of them are somewhat of an inexact science. And so you may see a map that says the soil is one thing, and by plus or minus 50 feet, you could have something else that's entirely different in its characteristics. And that the planning board has the ability to use its peer review scientists to actually go and do some more precise looks at soils, but perhaps the Conservation Commission or the zoning board and others don't have that authority. And so it's a little precarious for them to lead the way on someone's proposal without having that knowledge and science. How'd I do?
Well, that's very well put. It's a.
Thanks for that. Is there anything else that we should know or think about?
No, I think you summarized it very well, but I would have to say that it's important that the surveyor, the people who's going to design the subdivision, do their work extremely accurately. And there's no reason why that can't take place today with GPS systems. You don't have to hack yourself through the woods and try to find out what's going out, what's going on out there. But the, that doesn't always happen that way. And there's pressures on them too, to maximize the amount of development in that particular tract of land. So subsequently, sometimes shortcuts are taken, and we've had that problem in numerous places in the town, from surveyors who conveyed one tract of land to one person and conveyed a tract of land to another person that overlapped his land, and this went up the whole thing. The survey was blown, and it was certified to be accurate within 1 in 10,000 feet. Well.
Within 1,000 feet?
10,000.
10,000 feet, two miles.
Pardon?
Two miles. Accuracy.
I'm sorry.
Is that right? 10,000?
The typical surveyor certification is 1 in 10,000, yes.
1 in 10,000, okay. I thought it said within 10,000 feet. Good grief. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
But all I'm trying to bring out is that the town was, finally got involved, had to get involved in that to get that done. And, you know, the town gets involved to get, there's developments that are still located in floodplains with septic systems that won't work in floodplains, right? In the north end of town. And when we get that, then the town, then the pressure comes on if we want sewer, and your whole master plan might go right out the window. But the town shouldn't be chasing its tail in what it's doing.
And I don't know the town sewer plan in great detail, but I know it's about 15 steps or 15 phases that are stretched out into an indefinite period in the future, since there's no real timeline for any of the phases to move forward. So it's a, it's a long process. Do any members of the Conservation Commission have any questions or discussion about any things that Pete talked about with us? Any members of the planning board? Thank you, Pete, for your presentation and for putting it together. I know you put a lot of hours and a lot of time, and I know Alistair, you did as well, so thank you as well for helping to put that together. I think it's valuable information to think about, and although I still don't have the depth of knowledge on the science or anything close to it, at least I get the issue.
It's hard to do, it would just sound right, but, you know.
Thank you very much for that. I'll take a timeout from our joint meeting for a second. I see, Mr. Schwerer, you've entered the room to join our meeting. We discussed your item and granted your continuance to August 18th already, so you're all set for that. Thank you. So back to the joint meeting between the planning board and zoning board. If there's no more discussion, Conservation Commission and the planning board, stumbling over today. If there's.
We want to talk to ourselves.
Yes.
That's the trouble of having vacations, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, there's no trouble with vacations. There's never been trouble with vacations.
Coming back from vacation, that's the problem.
That is, that's it. If there's no more discussion on the soil types and the potential information related to that, let's move on to item B on the joint meeting agenda, which is a general discussion of the communication and issues of concern for the board and the commission. And my thought on that, my comment with that, is that it seems like, as you guys have reviewed projects, there are a handful of very consistent and very sensible recommendations that you make pretty consistently with fertilizer, salt use, calling straw, straw instead of calling it hay, and a few, maybe there's one other of those, and it seems to me, since those are so sensible and, and come up time after time, maybe it's a time to incorporate those things into regulation so they become automatic rather than something that you have to comment on from time to time. I don't know.
Exactly. Here, here.
Is that all there is to that?
Is that a motion?
Tim, is it a site plan regulation to do that kind of thing?
Subdivision and site plan regs, yes.
Subdivision, site plan, so it is within the planning board's purview to do that, if we chose to?
Yes.
And those three items, I mean, the one that's probably the most difficult to grasp is the salt and de-icing use, because in some areas of town, we don't necessarily restrict it, but certainly wouldn't hurt to see it restricted everywhere for the benefit of our water supply. But I don't know how we would develop a site plan regulation to either be town-wide or to be in certain areas, and how that impact would be received by the.
And I think that also requires some coordination with MVD as well.
Yeah, I think that one's a little bit more complicated than recommendations on fertilizer and, and slow release and all of that. Other than the fertilizer and the salt and the straw, are there common recommendations that you guys are making for us that?
Well, we pass along usually to folks that we prefer when they do landscaping projects, that they utilize native species as much as possible. I mean, I, I understand that, you know, in front of stores and other things, people like to put ornamentals and things like that, but we try to, we ask them to strike a balance if at all possible, so.
Okay.
That's one common thing. We, we also take a look at water and drainage and how it's handled, even though we know CLD and you folks do as well.
Okay.
We pay attention to what's going on there.
I'm, I'm interested in the concept that you're talking about with the native species as well as, for certain developments, to consider landscaping that's low water use for various reasons. But we don't, it's rare that we really get into selections on plant types.
No, the, the regulations currently encourage the use of native species, but it doesn't go much beyond that. I do have experience having written landscape requirements in my former community that delves into an actual table of specific plants that are encouraged, ones that are prohibited, and things of that nature, as well as dealing with the, the water issue, the salt hardiness issue, irrigation, a variety of different things. So I do have a little bit of wealth of information that, should the board want to go in a direction that way, they certainly have some experience I can draw upon for that.
How did it work in your former employee? Was it useful or was it a colossal pain in the rear?
It works really relatively well. I mean, for the most part, the landscape designers that are working on these projects, particularly for the larger projects, want the feedback. particularly for the larger projects, want the feedback that they get from staff and from the board to modify plans. For example, one of the typical things that I've made comment on here in Merrimack since I've been here, but was very typical in my time in Londonderry, the use of white pine, though it's a great natural native plant and tree for this type of climate and setting, they don't provide the types of screening characteristics that often you want to get out of an evergreen tree because of the way the branch structure and the pines and the needles are. So I typically would encourage them to look at spruce as an alternative. There are a variety of different native spruce that actually provide better buffering characteristics. So that type of back and forth, if you have the right regulations, recommendations in your regulations can kind of avoid some of the time that it takes to go back and forth with the landscape designer.
Yes, thoughts on this?
Yeah, well said, especially with the white pine. The white pine root structure is also not the best way to go, especially when they get larger, because depending on the soils underneath, you could end up with a white pine on your roof or other places, so.
Yeah, and I think soil types are part of that and also white pines do better in forests and clusters where they're shielding each other and they're shielded by other trees around them than one or two or three standing alone and field taller than everything else and catching all the wind.
Yeah, so our point about native species really gets to the other aspect of invasives. For a while, everyone thought the burning bush was a really great shrub to use around your property until it started invading and getting everywhere. Right now, we actually have probably a few acres right out in the middle of the Wasserman Conservation Area that is just going rampant, and I mean acres of burning bush, you know, thickness of this large, you know, much larger than you would ever have seen in someone's yard just because it took off and no one thought of it as an invasive before, but, you know, the birds eat the berries and the birds deposit the seeds and there you go. So, and there's other examples of that over time, so that's why it's good to look at nature's palette of plants and try and pick from there, so.
I don't have any burning bushes, but the autumn olive tree things are a nightmare.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, Japanese knotweed are now getting everywhere. Granted, that wasn't planted for ornamental reasons, but, so.
So how would we proceed if we wanted to go down that road? And I don't know if we want to be 100% prescriptive, but at least a little more involved in the landscape choices that commercial developments are making with respect to some of the things you're talking about, salt tolerance.
Yeah, this was a project I did in Londonderry, I want to say 2003, 2004 timeframe, and they've had very good experience with the implementation of the regulations. It's now just the developers that come into Londonderry understand that that's what the expectation is and it's typically what they're getting. In addition to that, it also, the regulations Londonderry uses also goes into parking lots and helping to help with the breaking up of the seas of asphalt that we typically see in some of the older developments. They're, it's set up in an incentive system where the position of your parking lot, if you put it in the front of the building, requires more internal landscaping. If you do it on the side, it's a little bit less. If you put it in the rear, it's even less. So it incentivizes the putting of parking in places so it's not the first thing you look at when you see a building. It helps with the design element of a site that if you're going to put it up front, you're going to have to put a lot more landscaping than you would if you positioned it otherwise.
Yeah, and Londonderry also hates underground stormwater storage facilities.
That's out of my realm of expertise.
Yeah, it's more of an issue, I think. Why don't we at least take a look at some of those ideas and see what makes sense here? I don't know that just grabbing something from another town is automatically the right fit, but it's probably worth at least considering.
There are pieces of it that I think would work here.
I think anything that gives a developer a clear answer to what they're trying to do is as much a help to them as anything else, because indecision when you're coming before a board and not knowing what the result's going to be is the worst for an applicant.
And if there's one thing that has frustrated me about our regulations is the complexity of our buffer requirements. They are, there are so many options and so many different ways that you can do a buffer based on the way the regulations are currently written. It just makes it difficult to come up with an appropriate application given the specific sites. I think we probably need to narrow down. It's one of the areas where I actually am advocating for a little less flexibility than we currently have.
And these are all subdivision and site plan regulations?
Correct. And I, can I ask you, these are soil, to some extent soil-dependent or not?
For the most part, it's, the way they work is it's based, there's no specific soil-based recommendation. It's, there's three tables that they have. There's the list of recommended native trees, list of recommended native shrubs, and then the list of either prohibited by the state or not recommended, both native and non-native species.
Okay. That makes some sense to me. Why don't we pull that forward, take a look at it? Tom?
Yeah, how common are those regulations that you were talking about earlier on the plantings?
They're not uncommon, but I don't think they're as widespread in New Hampshire as they are in other places. I think the further south you go down the east coast, the more prevalent the landscape design standards and a little bit more rigorous they become. New Hampshire is a mixed bag. Some communities have very strict and well-thought-out developed regulations. Other communities are, like us, they're not horrible, but they're, they could be a little bit better.
No.
And there are other communities that leave the whole issue completely blank and don't address it in the regulations.
So there's plenty of examples out there.
Absolutely. I drew upon probably 30 different sets of ordinances and regulations when I developed Londonderry's.
Okay, thank you.
And of all the regulations that I encountered in Londonderry for clients, the landscape one was not the difficult ones to deal with. Peterborough will have you ripping out non-native plants if they're on your property to do a development, so you've got to go get rid of all, eradicate all the invasives before you start, just for sport. Anything else?
So I, I'd like to touch on fertilizer for a moment.
Okay.
We've been suggesting fertilizers before you even apply that you have your soil tested. A number of projects, they'll clear all the native topsoil, put it in a big pile, do their work, and then redistribute that topsoil and then start throwing out 10, 10, 10 or whatever, try to green up things really fast when in fact if they just, while it was sitting there in the pile, went ahead and had it tested by a testing site, they might have found that they didn't need that kind of a mix or maybe no mix at all, because if it's a site that's been utilized already in a commercial or business stance, it's probably already been overloaded with fertilizer to begin with, so.
I think that what you're talking about makes a lot of sense. However, it brings up kind of a secondary issue that in a way kind of relates to the planting thing. As a land use board, we get that shot at reviewing things in its development stage and what somebody does actually on the site, there's nobody sort of looking at your bag fertilizer and there's nobody looking at what you planted five years from now or 10 years from now to see, did you change up from what the site plan did and are we going to do any particular thing about it because they did? So on some level, it's easy enough to say in a regulation that you want the plan to note that you're going to do X, Y, and Z, but in reality, it's got to be sort of an honor system in terms of its enforcement. Desiree?
Except for you could require them to submit that test that you wanted them to do, soils test, if you made that regulation, that they get their soil tested. I mean, how they go from there isn't, but at least they got it tested, so it's step one. If you're going to spend the money on it, hey, you might find out you don't have to amend your soil as much and it would be a savings to them too, I would think.
That's exactly one of the reasons we try to suggest that they do testing, because it's cheaper in some cases than having to buy fertilizer. So as a financial incentive, you know, there's one less step that they have to go through. They can send it, they can send it their way, they get a report back, everything's good. It's no cost.
That's true. Is there, is administratively reasonable way to attack something like this?
I'd have to look into it a little more.
I like the idea. I mean, it, that makes a lot of sense, both in terms of money savings and simplification, although you may still have a developer that says, you know what, I still want the grass to be greener, so put the stuff on there, but.
Is, the thing that always bothers me, and I may be being unkind to developers, but I seem to see them sort of haul the topsoil off when they start and it sort of disappears in a big truck and it goes somewhere. And I have a horrid feeling they're selling it somewhere else. And they then bring back some second-class soil and pour fertilizer on it. Now, I may be generalizing something that I've seen happen. Am I right or am I barking up a tree that I shouldn't be barking up?
Well, I don't know. I'm not a developer, so. But I've seen cases, you know, local to my own homes where I've seen what I described earlier, where they put it in a big pile and I've actually seen them do a screen operation and then put it back out again, so.
Okay.
So.
I mean, some of the big developers I think could be more trustworthy, but when I see some of the sort of smaller housing group developments going on, you know, eight to 10 houses, and there's so much topsoil appears to me to be disappearing, I'm just wondering. And I then wonder, are they then, what they've left behind, which is probably less good, are we pouring in too much fertilizer to make it effectively work?
Well, yeah, and there could be all sorts of different approaches to that because most of like your septic system plans will talk about being covered over with a layer of topsoil of four to five inches or something like that. So if you start on a site and there's a really rich 12 inches of topsoil, you can get rid of any of that and just give it away. You just don't need it, that never has to come back. And you've still got enough to meet what you've promised in your septic system plan. But also in doing septic systems and doing driveways and all of that where you're changing the soil constitution to be more sandy and to drain better, you're going to run the water through it faster, which means that you're going to want to fertilize it faster and same problem, helps.
Thank you, Bob. I just want to make the point that even though, yes, like what you said, is people may just completely ignore the regulation and just fertilize or do whatever it is when they think somebody's not around to watch them, see them do it, I wouldn't have that fear of people ignoring a regulation prevent us from putting a regulation in, establishing a regulation that might, you know, help, as exactly what Pete said, help us maintain our integrity of our water down the road.
I agree with you that I wouldn't not move forward with some kind of a plan if it made sense because I would be afraid that somebody would ignore it. And I also perhaps didn't give Merrimack residents enough credit. I don't think anybody would deliberately try and break the rules because they're out there in the middle of the night trying to sneak around. I think sometimes it's just hard to be aware of all the ins and outs of what a regulation requires and what my fertilizer has on it. Sometimes if you go to Home Depot and you get a bag of turf builder and you're trying to look for even what's in that stuff, you've got to look on the back and, you know, it used to be they put the 10, 10, 10 right up in front, you knew what you were buying and that's what I was looking for. Sometimes it's really hard to find on the bags and to know whether it's the slow release and low phosphorus and all of that stuff. It's, it's not easy information to have. And so I think people could inadvertently do the wrong thing with all the right intentions or same thing that we do when it's time to water your lawn and I don't remember whether it's an odd day or an even day or whether they're enforcing the particular outdoor water restrictions at the moment, even though they've never actually taken them off ever in the last bunch of years. But yeah, I think that people have the right intention and can still end up doing the wrong thing. Comments or questions?
So the good note in all of this is that DES and other agencies have started regulating fertilizer much more strictly. So when you go to Home Depot now and get a fertilizer with nitrogen, it's going to be, for the consumer, it's going to be a slow-release nitrogen because it's been dictated that way for consumer fertilizers. So they're playing a more active role, realizing that fertilizer does have an impact on our water system, so. So I'm not sure what the contractors are buying, but you as a, as a consumer will see, will get that automatically now, so.
So we don't have to be careful?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, because they go to Massachusetts or Maine or...
Right.
Yeah, well, I know the fertilizer's getting expensive. You can go over $50 now for a bag of turf builder with their bug killer and stuff in it.
All I know is have to do step one, two, and three, right? That's what people think now.
That's all I know.
Yeah. So the one last point about fertilizers, we've started recommending no phosphate around some of our streams and river systems and things like that. And you've started, you've probably started to see that in some of our recommendations, simply because we know what overloading phosphate can do. We've seen it in Horseshoe Pond and other places, so when we look at fertilizers, we may want to have, like we spoke earlier about salt, maybe have a no phosphate district. Don't just throwing it out there.
Well, you know, one of the things that's actually occurring fairly frequently with people that come before us is that they're before us, sometimes before we get a recommendation from you guys or before they've even been to see you guys. And in that, they're promising to do whatever you guys say in order to get our vote because they haven't gotten your recommendation yet. And so they're kind of binding themselves to your recommendations a little bit beforehand by the order that they choose to go through the process. When you are given that recommendation for no phosphorus near the streams, what are you using to decide what's near a stream versus what isn't?
Yeah. Did I just do one of these? Pretty much been looking at what we can see for streams and rivers and things around it, so, you know, recently we had some stuff on Executive Drive. We know that dumps in Natticoop Brook, which dumps directly into Horseshoe Pond, so if we're aware of the circumstances and where we believe water flows are going. Also, we know that the town's stormwater ends up in Natticoop Brook as well, so that even more incentive for us for those types of parcels, so. So I try to be aware of that and I think we as a commission try to look at those kinds of circumstances, so. But there is no hard science to it and I'm sure we haven't been consistent, so.
Do you guys have access to the town's stormwater management plan?
I'm sure, if it's online, I'm sure we do, which I believe it is.
I'm not particularly sophisticated in my understanding of it either, but I know that the objective of it from the federal environmental protection agency's viewpoint was to map out all of the catch basins and drainage structures and where they go and what they do and how they dump and how they treat and all of that. And so it may give you a sense of where water goes from a site, so you know whether it's one that has that kind of a concern. I have no problem accepting and acting on a recommendation from the conservation commission in that regard. If you're doing a little bit too much of the finger in the wind kind of a thing, you subject yourself to an applicant saying, yeah, it's not really science, that's kind of guesswork. And so far, it hasn't been an issue, but I guess it could be at some point.
Following up on Tim's comment earlier, the buffer zone delineations are going to be something that we could use as, you know, a little bit more hard science as to where those, you know, where those delineations are and what areas need to be, you know, no phosphate or low phosphates. And that's something we use now is the 100-foot buffer or the 50-foot buffer, like just trying to get the resident or the applicant aware of, look where you are and look where it's going, so.
Now, the buffers that Tim's talking about are the ones where a property is encountering a different zone or a different use.
Right.
And it isn't necessarily water-related.
Right, well, I'm saying, but there's, our buffers, there's, you know, 25-foot setback, there's 50-foot no, none, and there's a bunch of different buffers for what, you know, what riparian zones do. So that's one of our issues that we're seeing that on a plan, the marked buffer lines for the riparian zones, is to trust, make the residents aware, the applicants aware of where they physically are and what they're putting in the yard is where it's going.
Got you. An approach, again, going back to my previous experience, the Londonderry Wetland Ordinance, which was one of the most challenging pieces of ordinance regulation I've dealt with in my 18-plus years. Just to give you an idea, my second week on the job in Londonderry, the conservation commission, who had been working on the ordinance for eight years, held a public hearing. 401 people showed up at the public hearing, which then turned into me having a lot of negotiation and mediation to come up with something that both sides could live with. Ultimately, one of the things that they incorporated into their wetland ordinance was a requirement that the wetland buffer actually has little signs that mark where the buffer starts and says that this is a no-disturb area, no fertilizers, et cetera. And the town actually bought the signs and sells them to the developers at the time of construction so that they actually have to mark the buffer on the property.
They stay there?
They're either put on stakes or they're nailed to trees.
I don't know if I love that idea.
Yeah, I'd be pretty annoyed if I had signs in my backyard that said that.
That's the, the one drawback to it is they're big, bright, yellow signs that are about this big.
Pete, you wanted to add something? You've got to get to a microphone.
A very interesting discussion. Being a grower, I can understand where the conservation commission is coming from. And also being a victim is another issue, but I would suggest that you might want to get additional information that would be extremely helpful, would be... That would be extremely helpful would be the Hillsborough County Cooperative Extension Service and UNH. They have standards that they would, that they recommend. I would also strongly recommend that when we wrote into the ordinance empowering the Conservation Commission with a review of... By law, they have a certain goal, objective to protect water resources. When we gave them additional authority in the aquifers, that was there to help to protect the aquifers, so they have to review anything that's gonna happen in the aquifers. But the most important thing to me is that if the intent of bringing them into the ordinance for water quality was because at that time they were doing testing on streams. That has really been discontinued for over the years. Of course, they got tied up with buying, purchasing land, that type of thing, but they were very heavily involved in water sampling of streams and flows and you're able to determine where, actually where things are coming from.
Who was involved in doing all the testing?
Pardon?
Who was doing the testing? Conservation Commission was doing testing?
Yes, yes. So they used to do that. Now, the only ones that do that is George May. He monitors the Southern River and he monitors the Merrimack River. They take their samples, they publish the information and issue warnings, biological warnings where people could get sick or injured as a result of being in the water. So that would probably be a good area for them to, for you to get into and establish a periodic monitoring program in some of the streams in Brooks that we have in town. And you might see what the impact is. For example, Windsor and Deerfield Soil, you go and put grass up on that, sod up on that soil and start irrigating it. Any fertilizer you put in, nutrients, nitrogen, what have you, go right down into the water table. Shows up in wells, wells four and five. So in, despite the fact that you can write regulations, you attempt to write it, but the biggest thing that you're going to, I believe you're going to look at is what I call best management practices. We have a tract of land that has a mixture of very sensitive soils. Where I do my growing, apply my fertilizer, and I'm also licensed pesticide applicator. And what we do, how we do it, exactly what we're going to do and how much we're gonna use is very important to us. We don't put plants on the ground, we put them on a ground cover. So if the wind blows over, blows a plant container down, we also use a fertilizer which is called Osmocote. It's in Prills. So we're able to pick it right back up. If you're on the ground or on the grass, then, well, you're not gonna see that. So when you talk about hydrogen lawn fertilizers, you have to keep putting that on when you get into those types of sales. So there's a message there. If you look at the Hinckley and Windsor type soils around you, you're likely, probably, very likely to determine where the source of the problem is coming from. So, and that's easily done. But in our case, we, I do a lot of soil testing for customers. And you'd be surprised at how much fertilizer we measure the electrical conductivity. They just pour this stuff in there and it's going out somewhere. It's gonna come out, you know? We try to train them to show, you know, conserve, if fertilizer changes style, go the simple thing like 10-10-10, you know, at a cook, 10-10-10. That's the best we can do, but that's where kind of help you can get from the Cooperative Extension Service that can give you guidance and how you can help and reach out to the town. And UNH also is tied into that. I'm sorry to take up so much time.
Well, to carry on with what you're saying, it's my understanding that when you use a lot of fertilizer, you're not building root systems. And the stuff just, as you said, just runs right through. So you're not building any kind of root system, you're building a dependency on your cover for that fertilizer. So you're gonna keep adding more and more and more to maintain your greensward in front of your house.
That's right.
Okay, for the curb appeal, if you will. So, you know, that's part of the issue, is that it's a two-edged sword. You know, it's a blessing and a curse. And in this place, you know, now we're seeing how much of a curse it's turning into in terms of water quality.
Pete, or anyone else that knows the answer? Is there a certification through UNH or the Cooperative Extension for? You mentioned pesticide applicators. Is there one for fertilizer applicators?
For landscapers, there's really no training for landscapers in the application. In that respect, it's very, very limited.
What I was fishing for, hoping for, we have for years now required applicants to have their snow and salt applicators be Green Snow Pro certified.
That's right.
And I was trying to figure out if there was a summertime equivalent that we could require of an applicant for their fertilizer and pesticide use.
Well, you could do that in the subdivision, once you identify the soil surrounding it and say, "Hey, wait a minute, pesticide use typically is governed by the EPA and the state of New Hampshire as far as standards are concerned. Fertilizer, it's what people are going to pick up and apply."
Yeah, residential's always gonna be the wild card, but for the commercial developments, I was hoping that there was some certification, we could say that you need to have your fertilizer and pesticides applied by a certified so-and-so, the same way we've done with the Green Snow Pro. But if there's not such an entity out there that certifies or credentials or teaches people best practices or any of that, there's really nothing that we can go after for that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any, but it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. We'd have to dig a little bit, so.
May I challenge that? I mean, I thought if you work for True Green Landscaping, you know, the people who go around doing lawns and things, I thought their operatives had to have some sort of training stroke certification before they were allowed to cheerfully set off with those trucks and their funny little trolley things that go in the tradle at the back. I thought they had to have some sort of certification training.
I think the pesticide people definitely do.
Pesticides definitely do.
Pesticides and herbicides, yeah.
But not fertilizers?
I don't know.
We should look into that, because that could be something that would benefit us to have for some of the bigger commercial developments.
Let me just say this, there are good landscapers out here who are very conscientious about what they do and how they handle their clients, plants and things like that. And they educate their clients. But there are some, that grass has to be green. Everybody in the condos and in those buildings wants to, wanna see green grass, you're gonna get it, yeah.
Thank you for that.
But yes, as far as any pesticides, just maintaining and keeping your license and reporting is, it's almost overwhelming at times, you know?
Pain in the rear.
But it's needed, I support it.
Thank you, Pete. Are there other topics or issues we should discuss between the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board?
Yeah, I'd like to address one other question I really have for the Planning Board. So you've been seeing our recommendations for the last couple of years, well, for many years, but more recently for the last couple of years from pretty much the core team that you see, our town councilors kind of come and go, but...
Oh, it was over two years, come on!
But is there something that you wished we would be looking at or commenting on? Some information that you're not, or opinions or ideas that you're not getting from us that maybe you want us to be?
Let me think about that for a second while I offer a compliment to the way things have been going for the last couple of years. When I'm getting an email right as your meeting is ending with what your recommendations are, and sometimes you guys are meeting on Monday night, we're meeting on Tuesday night, and I'm here with my phone reading the email that you gave to the applicant, it's been such timely information and a better response and better information than we were getting prior to whatever that was, the last two or three years ago, where basically applicants were sent to the Conservation Commission and were charged with meeting whatever the Conservation Commission said. But as a planning board, I never really had any feedback from any of that stuff before. So I'm really happy with getting that level of feedback and that, obviously, it's probably an extra bit of diligence on your part to be doing it right after, literally right after a meeting like that. And I don't know if that's necessarily required in all circumstances, but it's great to have the detail and the diligence that you've done with those things. Do any other members of the Planning Board have issues that they wish the Conservation Commission would comment on? And any further interest or detail?
I have, I guess, a question, not really an issue. We've had people come before us recently when they do more of the clustered subdivisions. Tameson Drive was one, whatever the 13...
Chestnut Hill is one.
Yeah. When they're coming forward, they're blocking off chunks of land where they're basically gonna give them to the conservation or put them under the authority side?
Designated open space that they have to do for clusters.
Right. We've seen both, where they've suggested a donation such as the Tameson property, I believe that was a donation, what was targeted there. On Chestnut Hill, they were talking about an easement for that one, so we get both.
Do you have a preference?
So donation is a two-edged sword, because now you own it, now you have to deal with it. You have to deal with what the neighbors think is their backyard, but it's not. And you have to monitor it and all that, but you have that with easements as well. The trouble with easements is then you've gotta coordinate with another body or another person in order to do some of the things you might wanna do to manage it. So I don't have a clear, easy answer. I'll let the other members chime in, but probably at the end of the day, donation is typically the better route. If in fact it applies to, say, another parcel that we have as well. So it just makes, it's just an extension of what we're already doing, so.
As a planning board, I don't think that we've ever forced an applicant to do one way or another. We've had that discussion lots of times. And in my mind, from my lawyer hat standpoint, if you don't give the property to the town, somebody else has to own it. And if somebody else has to own it, it's gotta be property owners or homeowners association or something. And then you've got 87 people who all have a vote on when you mow it and when you do things with it. And from a legal standpoint, that's just inviting trouble. Eventually, that's gonna crash. That can't work. It never has. It always is a source of conflict. And so putting it into the Conservation Commission's hands or some other body's hands avoids that situation where you've got the neighbors having to agree on whatever, because they'll never agree.
Yeah. The downside with owning is we run into the situation that we have around town now where, especially along with Busser Brook and other places, we have all these backlots that, you know, subdivisions that were done in the late 70s and early 80s where they couldn't figure out who to give it to, so they just gave us this squiggly weird type of thing that wraps about 10 different properties. And we don't really have an access point in order to get out there and do anything, and that gets hard. And we've also encountered with previous councils, when it comes to donations, well, now you've just taken land off the tax rolls. Now, we all understand that common land or backland isn't all that valuable tax-wise, but that is a concern that I've seen come up during the donation process, so. But again, none of that changes my earlier comment. I'll let anyone else chime in, that donation's probably the better route, so.
Anyone have any other thoughts? I think, go ahead, Jody.
No, I just, when a developer goes, "Here is this great piece of land right in the middle of all these houses and we're giving it to you." It's not necessarily the greatest thing, that they're trying to make it out to be the greatest thing. As Tim said, there are drawbacks to it. I'm not saying that it's all bad, but I think sometimes they play it up to be a real big, wonderful gift and I just think it's probably more for a talking point than for anything else.
I've been on the developer's side of that one, where there's a big development in Manchester where after all was said and done, there was four acres of junk along the river that they gave back to the town as a park. Yay! And nobody wanted it, couldn't use it for anything, it was a mess.
So the two examples that were just brought up are actually interesting to us because we do have a budding parcels to both of those. So they will complement what we already have, so.
So where there's some kind of a weird flag-shaped thing that's in the middle of six lots, we probably ought to leave that in their hands and the bigger things that connect, deal with them on a case-by-case basis going forward, needs to make more sense.
In some cases, it may not make sense for the Conservation Commission to have any role in those open space properties. It may make sense to leave it either with an association or as part of the property owners with their each individual interest. Or the other option, which I've seen in other parts of the state but not as frequently, is third-party conservation organizations, like a land trust or something like that, is another option that's also available for those types of properties.
Yeah, and actually, that's something we're gonna start exploring at our next meeting. The Biscataqua Land Conservancy is gonna come visit with us and talk to us about what they do and what kind of services they can offer. Because we'd like to have another item in our arsenal, if you wanna call it that, so.
As we go forward, I think, I don't know when it'll be, there's not that much undeveloped land in Merrimack and you start to get to the point of redeveloping land. How does that sort of affect your role as a Conservation Commission where you're not dealing with first-time development on open land, but redevelopment of something that had been there before?
Well, going back to the ordinance, some of those activities may or may not even have it come to us, if I'm correct, Tim, right? So, but I think our concerns about water and why this was all started because of concerns of water are still very relevant even in redevelopment. So we need to be looking at that to understand what the impacts of water, what have we learned since the last time it was touched, that sort of deal. But the question would be, is can we actually do something about improper drainage and things like that? I don't know how the ordinances work, so.
Well, I don't know the ins and outs of the ordinance in as much detail as it would take to answer that question. However, everybody in this room is a citizen of Merrimack and can come sit at the table and testify if they got something to say on any application, so. Always that.
So I have one last item, just a heads up. You'll see more of it coming through the town council. We've spent a lot of time looking at beaver management and water control issues that are related to beaver activities. And we spent quite a bit of money having a study done professionally. We've created a beaver management or habitat map structure. Actually, a model that can predict, based on certain conditions, what the likelihood of beaver activity is gonna be. That is something that we have a final study for. We're actually gonna be revamping the beaver policy. But we'd like to make sure that you, as a planning board, are aware of that model that we have, which is gonna be incorporated into our GIS system. So that way, when there is development in an undeveloped parcel, you could refer to that habitat map and have an idea of the potential for beaver activity, which can change a whole neighborhood very quickly, especially if the conditions are right, and we see that all the time. So just a heads up, more to come.
Well, thanks for sharing with us, because until you said that, I had no idea that you're at all in tune to the issue. I'm intrigued by it, because you see both sides of the issue. We're sensitive to the habitat for beaver and all of that stuff, but also beaver dams, like you said, can be really destructive to land and sometimes people are looking to get rid of them. And I don't know which side. I'd love to go sort of see what your thoughts are on the subject a little bit more and know.
So part of that study was, how do we then control the water when you have beaver also co-located or in the same habitat? Just a little pipeline pump.
They're your friendly neighbor.
But we are actually exploring different ways to control the water levels so that we can live in harmony with the beavers and things like that. We've actually seen some success. And so that way, we can have those kinds of things and we can make developers aware that maybe these are the types of structures you wanna include in the beaver dam system to allow both to live well together, so.
Have you looked at the White Pine Swamp area?
Yes, yeah, we...
Okay, that's where you've been?
Okay, that's where you've been?
Well-
That's the biggest beaver dams I think I've ever seen anywhere, and there's about ten of them.
Right, yes.
Now, doesn't the EPA have something to say about wetland protection?
Yeah, DES does, yeah, and, yeah, so.
Do we have any authority at all about this, is what I'm really asking?
About beaver dams?
Yes.
Well, there are, there's a whole RSA on beaver dams, on what you can and can't do, and I'm going to turn it over to Gage, who's more my resident expert.
Stop. Yes, as Tim was saying, we did, we did contract with the, with a environmental firm, and they did a pretty broad study across town, the map, the habitat map. We gave them about twenty-seven areas in town where we knew we had issues. They generated the map outside of that list, generated the map, came up with thirty-one, and all of our original twenty-seven were on it. So, we felt comfortable that the map is, the habitat map actually is, comes up with the right-
The model.
Yeah, the model, comes up with the right data. We did install, we've got four devices installed in town now. One of them, one of the, one of the areas that caused a great deal of problem out here, the Meadowwood Pond, the water level has stayed solid, and it's all, it's not been a problem yet, so we've not heard any more complaints. Their biggest complaint we had is people complaining about the water level coming up and down, up and down, up and down, as PWD or whoever was out adjusting the dam levels. Now, the water is at A level, and it's staying there. So, we're having a very, we're having very good luck with these devices. The, a couple of the other areas that, you know, you bring up a good point as to common areas that, in an association, some of those areas now are the ones that we're having some issues with, and you're talking third, fourth generation owners that had no idea they were part of an association, and they had no idea that now this is property is their responsibility, and they are calling, you know, PWD to come down and take care of this problem. So, it's, that's becoming a little bit of a, that's coming to the forefront now.
Yeah, happens a lot. It happens in big developments and small ones. It happens when the property used to be, you know, two brothers and a sister that had houses that their grandpa built for them, and now it's been sold a million times and it's not in the same family anymore, so nobody has the same affinity for each other as they had when the houses used to share a well and a septic system and all of that fun, so it's everywhere. But thank you for sharing that information about the beaver dam mapping that you have. I think that'd be interesting to know more about. Are there anything else that planning board or Conservation Commission would raise? Desiree?
I had a question, I'm trying to remember it, though. I think I just brain farted it. Oh, oh, more, more about like, what, what do you guys do more? I'm right by Beaver Pond, our neighbors. So, you guys have subcommittees too, the Greater Woods Conservation and Horse Hill, there's a bunch of other ones, so that's, they're your guys' subcommittees that you guys work with, and so I guess my question is, you guys oversee that, and then those are in charge of, like, the trail maintenance, because I know personally, like, on, like, all the Greater Woods trails, a lot of them have been, like, freshly, kind of cleaned up in spots in the last couple of years, and new markings and stuff, and lots of projects have happened up there, so I want to say thanks for that, those are wonderful, as a user of them. And also, just curious what your guys' role is, I guess, with that? Do you kind of have like a master plan of where you're going with that? Do you oversee stuff like that?
Wow, lots of questions.
Yeah, sorry, I rambled.
So, our, our activities related to the planning board probably make up about ten percent of the work that we do. So, we, we in town oversee approximately sixteen hundred acres of land. Some of that we own, some of that we manage, some of that's been deeded to us, some of that we manage because the council has asked us to manage that. We have pretty much five larger parcels that we speak about, and you can find out about on our MerrimackOutdoors.org website. So, three of those five parcels, we have a subcommittee that works with us, that we appoint, is a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission, and that's for Horse Hill Nature Preserve. That subcommittee has been in a few different iterations, but that's been around for many years now. Greater Woods Subcommittee got put in place two years ago now, or just about two years ago now. And then we have a subcommittee for the Wildcat Falls Conservation Area, what people used to call eighty acres, so. Each one of those subcommittees is starting to take ownership of the parcels. They do the day-to-day management and maintenance of the parcels. Some of them have been more successful than others, but the whole idea is to, is to create a great outdoors experience across all those parcels, and eventually, if we can take this model and grow it, we can grow it into the, to what was, used to be called the Ireland Property, now Fields Farm that abuts the Tamesian area project that you folks all worked on earlier. Greater Woods will expand, and that committee will inherit the easements that are being part, being thought of around Chestnut Hill development, so, so that's something we're doing there. We're also actively looking for more open-spaced land. The town was very gracious in the early two thousands and mid-two thousands to supply us money through the land use change tax monies, so we now have a fund of one point three-plus million dollars that we have available to us to purchase and maintain our property. And I say both purchase and maintain because all of us mow our lawn and we take care of our land and things like that. Well, we need to have money available to do those things for these large parcels and whatever, but, but when you look at the open space that's in the western part of town, you're looking at land that we all have an eye on, and we're actively working on to try and increase and broaden and create this greenscape, open space through the, through the western end of town that connects to a green space in Amherst and creates, you know, a large wildlife area eventually, so, as well as, you know, the opportunities for staycations and things like that, so. So, yes, we do have a lot of other things going on, so. Did I summarize well?
Is Horse Hill one of the areas that you, that you folks manage?
We do, yeah, absolutely, yeah, which includes the White Pine Swamp area, yep, so.
I'll ask the same question that you asked of me a little while ago. Is there things that you need the planning board to take a closer look or a different approach on, or are things that we can provide or do better in terms of our interaction with you?
Most of, you know, what I've been wondering is, is we send these comments in and what happens, so.
But usually, before we get done reading them, the applicant says, "Yeah, it's fine with me, I'll do it," because they just want their vote, they want their approval.
So.
And they're not the most onerous requirements either, so usually they're, "Yep, I'm aware of those, yes, we'll do it."
Depending on when they're received, they typically make their way into our staff recommendations as part of the proposed conditions of approval on a project, unless there is, in the case, like, you have a Monday, Monday night meeting and we don't get it in time. Typically, what we'll do then is, the recommendation from staff, knowing that that hasn't yet happened, would be to address any forthcoming comments from the Conservation Commission. Once we have them, we then incorporate them into the decision, so. From a staff standpoint, as to how they get integrated, they go right into the staff memos and part of the recommended conditions that the board considers each meeting.
Yeah, but it also, your question touches on the comment you made right up in the beginning, that there's a number of things that we fairly consistently do, and maybe we should find a way to integrate that into our regulations, and therefore, we don't have to do that for, you know, on a consistent basis. And we were also wondering how you think, are there a broken record?
No, not at all. I think, from an applicant's standpoint, having the consistent recommendations that apply to everybody, and they're not special for me, and they don't sort of single me out, I think that's what would make an applicant feel comfortable with regulatory process. Whatever it is, if I know what it is, I know how to proceed. So, I don't have any problem with, you know, hearing the same things. I think in terms of the regulations, the, you know, the easiest thing in the world to do is to have the site plan and subdivision regulations call for straw instead of hay. The fertilizer thing is the thing we talked about, sort of taking a little closer look at and seeing, is there a way to look at it? We talked about looking at London Dairy's landscaping, although that's not one of the recommendations you guys have typically made, it sort of flows from one. I think the most difficult one for us to manage is the ice melting and snow melting things, because we've typically been stricter with that in the Ock for Conservation District and the Wellhead Protection Areas, and less strict in other places. More often than not, when you're, you're making the recommendations kind of across the board, that people don't use deicing, and sometimes you don't necessarily make a recommendation as much as an observation that you appreciate that they've already committed to doing that. It's almost becoming a regulation that's enforced without even being a requirement, because they're so eager to get their approval, they're willing to do what you want, because they know that we were going to take into consideration what you want, even if we wouldn't normally have brought that issue up. So, I think we're getting better salt control as a result of that dynamic than we would if we were strictly looking at saying, everybody in a Wellhead Protection Area has no salt use.
At least on the commercial industrial side.
Yeah, yes, on the residential, it's a different story, because you don't have any enforcement.
Yeah, and to follow up on that, when NanoCom came in for their expansion, and we started talking about the Green Snow Pro, the guy was delighted, and his comment was, "You're going to save me money." And I think a lot of them look at it that way, is that, you know, with the, with the use of really good best management practices, they're going to end up saving their clients a lot of money over time because they won't have to, or they're being required not to
Yeah, Snow Pro uses less material than ordinary.
So, you know, there's an advantage, it's not just the advantage of the approval. I think the better guys that come in in front of the Conservation Commission, when they make their comment, they understand the long-term benefit to them, and, you know, plus it enhances the, is their own business, because they're engaging in that activity and, you know, that kind of, that kind of recommendation.
There's an additional benefit to the Green Snow Pro that most of the applicants aren't even aware of, although I've mentioned it to a few of them at times, and that is the liability waiver that comes with participating and using the Green Snow Pro system. Most of the applicants are sitting there just stunned that they can use less material and be absolved of any consequences of slipping and falling on ice, even if their deficiency in the statutes really brought, it says something like knowingly deficient. It's just really a crazy amount of liability waiver that comes with using the Green Snow Pro system.
Yeah, and we've started to educate all the engineering firms, like Meridian and Hanners, Swanson, and the others. They all know now when they're coming to see us, "Oh, yeah, this is what you guys want." Their plans are starting to reflect that before we even get them now, which is nice.
Well, and I think that it, on a secondary or tertiary level, you start to see all of the snowplow companies in town following those practices because they know that's what's going to be expected, and they may be introducing it to properties that don't come before us or haven't had a need to come before us. And I was hoping that we would come across a fertilizer and insecticide approach that would similarly sort of become a part of the way everybody's doing it, just because it's become common enough, it's gained that sort of critical mass. And we'll get there, just got to figure out what the, do some more homework, figure out what that is.
From a timing perspective, talking about regulatory changes, there are a few things still on the docket right now. We've got the medical marijuana that's going to be in front of you guys in two weeks, and the council in two weeks. The planning board has also given me the go-ahead to start looking at the economic revitalization types of zoning for the old shaws, the Merrick Hotel site, and others like that. So, this would probably fall third in line, just from a timing perspective, as to how this, just to try to get everybody's expectations in line, as to when my staff and I are going to have the time to do this.
Yeah, I think that any time you talk about these changes, they take, they take some time to do, because there's a lot of thought that has to go into them if you want them to work right. But in the meantime, the same recommendations that you've been making can continue to carry that ball until it becomes a change in the regulations that eliminate the need for it. But I don't know if there's any role for anybody to help you with any of that drafting, or you want to control that steering wheel for a while?
I'll control that steering wheel, at least on the onset.
All right. Should we discuss anything else that we're together? I thought this was a really productive meeting, I think we really had a good exchange of information. I don't know what your guys' thoughts were.
I enjoyed it very much, I'm glad we had it, so.
Is there anything else that we should do or deal with? Okay, with that, then we would close the joint meeting of the Planning Board and Conservation Commission. The other items on our agenda that we have not covered is a planning and zoning administrator's report. Tim, do you have anything for us?
I do, got it.
Can I ask Mr. Chairman quickly? Tim, did you say you have an alternate member who's not here tonight?
We do, we have an alternate member, yeah.
May I give you a copy of this for him when you leave?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Let me give it now. Go on, Mr. Chairman, don't mind me.
Are there any questions by members of the board for the planning and zoning administrator in his department? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. I don't have any discussion or action items for tonight. Does anyone else have any? I will announce, for our own benefit, the, don't forget the August twenty-second barbecue. Come on over. Approval of minutes of July twenty-first, twenty-fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, could I just come back just for a second, and I apologize. I mean, Pete put a lot of effort into what you saw on the screen. I don't know whether there's anything we should discuss any further. I'm not volunteering, I tell you, I've put a lot of time into what you've seen so far, but I just feel we should just, as a board, decide, is there anything we can do, should do, are able to do, and I know the state law is fairly strong on certain things. I just think it's worthy of at least two minutes of our thoughts. Do we do anything more, or should we just simply take it on as evidence and just remember it?
I agree with the sentiment that you've expressed. I would perhaps suggest that we take a look at that in a future meeting to be able to absorb this information that we just got a little bit and decide. I think even if it's, if it's not a change in regulations, but just a, you know, a communication to the zoning board to say, "Hey, you know, we've been, we've had these issues on our mind, just thought we'd share them with you."
And just, just to share my thoughts, which I've relayed to Pete in the past, and I know he doesn't like them. I am very cautious and hesitant to make any changes to the zoning ordinance regarding soils and zoning ordinance procedures as it relates to variances. The reason being, as soon as you put something in the zoning ordinance, it is another thing that an applicant can request a variance to. So, if we put in a requirement that they have to come to the planning board first, they'll just request a variance to that as well and go to the zoning board with two variances. One, they have to go to the planning board first, and then the second one for whatever they want to do. I just, I can, we can encourage it, we can do all kinds of things, communication from the planning board to the zoning board to encourage them to table and allow the planning board to make comment, but putting it into the ordinance, I think, is not the rest of the course of action in this case.
And I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman. I think the most we should do is encourage.
Absolutely, and I, but I think that that can be done. I think that our zoning board has the right approach to things and is open to communication and messages, and so if we're conveying some interest in some things that they're doing, they probably would appreciate having someone have an opinion on something. Obviously, we don't walk on their path or tell them what to do, but we can certainly say, "Hey, these are some things that we think are important."
It's just a very fine line that as staff, we have to play with the zoning board, because except in the case when somebody's appealing one of our decisions, we really cannot make specific recommendations to the zoning board, given their quasi-judicial nature. We just can't do it.
Understood. But I do appreciate your sentiment that Pete did put a lot of work into it and made a good presentation, and it is something that deserves some closure of any sort, but-
In the future.
But I do want to sort of think through and look at the presentation and know a little bit more before I do that. Are there other items of concern or discussion items?
I wanted to talk to that still.
Yes, please.
Oh, okay, okay. With, with regards to, like, the Conservation Commission suggests stuff to us, recommendations, can we also make recommendations to the zoning board along the same lines of things? If, if we found ourselves in the point where we felt as if we had enough knowledge about the topic, like, one of us suddenly becomes the soil scientist or something, like, where you had like that extra, when you could kind of apply the stuff that we're learning a little bit here, is that, or is that specifically what you're saying with that whole?
It's, it's a very fine balance that you have to take. As an individual planning board member, you're certainly welcome to provide written testimony or verbal testimony at a hearing regarding that, but it's, it would have to be very carefully crafted if the board as a whole is providing quote-unquote "recommendations" to the zoning board in any decision that they have.
Which means if that's a regular thing, that's just not going to fly, then, okay.
No, I mean, I know, you just said, you, I think you explained why, can you say it one more time, why that's the case?
The zoning board is a quasi-judicial body. They are essentially enabled by state law to authorize an applicant to break the rules and ordinances of the town. So, what, so it can be as simple as putting a structure closer to the setback requirement or a use that's not permitted. Because it's done in a quasi-judicial manner, the zoning board really only considers- Because it's done in a quasi-judicial manner, the zoning board really only considers testimony in written form presented prior to a meeting or verbal testimony given at a meeting. They have to consider that. They have a very strict set of five points of law that they have to go through and take cases of variances. Those are really the only things they can consider, are those five points of law, at least in variance cases.
Is that in the zoning manual that you, you've given us a copy of?
It's probably not in the planning board handbook I've given you. It's, it's in your state statutes, the statute book that you have. I don't recall the exact statute number off the top of my head, but...
It's in the 600s.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the most recent zoning ordinance amendment we did for the section eight of the zoning ordinance, instead of listing them in the ordinance, we actually have a reference to that state law now instead.
I think you gave us one of the OEP's Guides to Land Use Boards that I think has that stuff in it, too. I, I think that the challenge in doing anything official from the board in addition to the minefield that Tim's talking about is the timing of it, in that you would have to have some information about a project at a planning board, discuss it, make a decision, prepare a communication to the zoning board, and have that occur before the zoning board meets. Or designate one of us to go appear before the board and deliver some testimony before the board meets. And if the applicant chooses to go to the zoning board first, we may not even have an application in our system.
Ninety percent, ninety percent of the time, they're going to go to the zoning board first, so that they establish what the expectations are for their project before they come here.
Yes.
Just for clarification, 67433 is the statute that aligns the statutory criteria of variances.
Now, as an individual, if someone wants to watch the zoning board's addendums, which are distributed the same way ours are, you can keep an eye out for a project that you think is important and go as an individual and say, testify before the zoning board and say, "Hey, this is something to pay attention to."
There is a function on the town website that if you become an e-subscriber note member, you will get notices when zoning board, planning board, town council, any of those agendas are posted to the website.
I think when, perhaps it, it might just sort of help people to understand where much of this came from, is that the development on Tomasian Drive, I think I pronounced it right.
Tomasian.
Tomasian, right, sorry. Well, I'm English, I speak different.
Yes. We will take that into consideration.
Thank you.
British people don't speak English.
They, in Pete, in Pete Gagnon's view, and Pete did testify to the ZBA, he believes that that development is not, if you like, the best development for the, given the soils that he says they will, they have found or will found, or according to the book, Book of the Soils of the, of the Eastern Division of Hillsborough County. He believes there is a problem there. Now, despite all I've done with him, and I've spent a huge number of hours with him recently, I still don't know the answer, because I, you know, it is, it is questionable. But from Pete's point of view is that he believed there were issues. The ZBA made decisions on what could happen on that site before we knew anything about it. Pete's on the email thing, and he finds out and go, he went and actually testified. And he feels, felt, and still feels, development is over use of the land. I'm not going to go any further than that, just the explanation.
The reason why clusters are not typically allowed in the R1 district by MAP is because of the soils.
That's it.
And because Tomasian does not have access to municipal sewer, they needed a variance to be able to do a cluster-style development in that particular location. What the zoning board determined was that the benefit of the town gaining the additional conservation land adjacent to Horse Hill, plus the, the fact that, you know, yes, the, the soils that are shown on the county soil survey say one thing, but they actually had their soil scientists go out there and do site-specific soil mapping to show that they had the soils that could satisfy the requirements for septic systems out there. That's state law, if you've got a soil scientist who puts his stamp on that plan, they have the liability if it's incorrect. So the site-specific mapping showed that then they made their case to the zoning board and were able to get the zoning board to agree with that and prove that they met those five criteria. That's all it took. But generally speaking, you know, cluster subdivisions without access to municipal sewer, it's typically not a good idea. But in this case, the zoning board made this decision that it was appropriate.
And I think ultimately, as that process went through and the formal soil mapping was completed and some tweaks to the subdivision and all of that, I recall that before the planning board gave its final stamp of approval on that, they had won Pete over and got a, got a head nod from him, so certainly went through the process. Pete was also interested in Edgebrook Heights and the planning board's decision to add a little extra density out of Edgebrook Heights, but Edgebrook Heights is, is on sewer and water, so not exactly the same issues, but it is what it is. Any other discussion on those items? Okay, that brings us to the minutes of July?
21st.
21st, 2015. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we could accept the minutes as written. I personally couldn't find anything that I was unhappy about.
Excellent. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0. That's happened twice in the, every time I've been in the chairman.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Don't forget turning your microphones on.